Gentlemen, at 7:30 PM, this is the American Fork City Council meeting for November 28th, 2017. Our agenda's been posted on the state's website as required by state law, as well as posted several locations throughout the community advertising tonight's meeting. A copy of the agenda's on the table in the center of the room. If you'd like to grab one, we can follow along. We'd like to recognize in our chambers this evening, we have Councilmember-elect Stacy Carroll, Councilmember-elect Barbara Christensen. We're happy to have them with us this evening. We would begin this evening by a pledge of allegiance, a prayer by Councilman Kevin Barnes, after which I will conduct the roll call. Would the audience please rise?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We begin this city council meeting this evening, we pause and acknowledge Thee and give Thee thanks for each and every blessing that we enjoy. We're grateful for this opportunity to meet, to conduct city business, to discuss those things that pertain to the city as an organization and to the citizens who live here. We're grateful for the freedom that we have to meet in meetings such as this, to use self-government and to use government to help and to bless the citizens of our community. We're grateful for this great country and for the freedoms that we enjoy as a country, for Thy choice blessings upon this land and upon this people. We're grateful for those who have fought for the obtaining and defending of these freedoms, and we're mindful of those who currently serve in so many different capacities to serve and protect us, and we pray that they and their families might be blessed and protected. We're grateful for the opportunity that some of us have as elected officials to serve this community, and we pray as we meet here this evening that we might be able to conduct the city's business in a proper manner. The discussions that will be held will be done with civility and with acknowledgement of each other and each other's feelings and opinions. We are grateful for our city employees and for all that they do, and pray that they might be blessed in their activities, that they might be able to enjoy working and find success in their endeavors. We're grateful again for all of our blessings, and especially grateful at this time of year for the two wonderful seasons that we have in Thanksgiving and the opportunity and the blessing to give Thee thanks and acknowledge Thy hand in this country. And we're grateful for the Christmas season to celebrate the birth of Thy Son and our Savior even, Jesus Christ. We pray that we might enjoy this Christmas season, that the beauty and the wonderful spirit of Christmas might enter into the hearts of Thy children. And we again thank Thee for all that we enjoy, pray for the other blessings Thou hast for us that we need, and we do this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Councilman Barnes. And I'll conduct a roll call. Councilman Barnes.
Here.
Councilman Bowen. Councilman Frost.
Here.
Councilman Shelton.
Here.
Councilman Shorter.
Here.
With four councilmembers present, if there's a tie on any voting matter this evening, the mayor will cast the deciding vote. That is per state law. We set the time aside on our public meetings. We would like to invite those young men that are here for scouting purposes to come forward to microphone at this time, introduce themselves, tell us your name, your rank, your troop number, and who your scout leader is, please. Come forward now, please. Just turn around, face the audience, and pull that down to you. Okay? Good.
My name is Christian Doss. I'm from Troop 1090. I'm a Weibo scout, and my leader is Andrew Meekeum.
Thank you.
My name is Dallin Hill, and my troop is 853. My scout leader is Cole Chamberlain, and...
Your rank?
Um, my rank is, I'm a 12-year-old Deacon scout.
Thank you. Thank you. You young men go along scouting's trail. We wish you much success. It's going to be an exciting couple of years for you too, and we wish you well. When you get that magic rank of life and start looking for an Eagle project, look around your neighborhood, look around your ward, look around your school, look around the community, see what you can do to make our community a better place in which to live. The city benefits greatly from these Eagle Scout projects, and we do several hundred of them every year, and it benefits us greatly. So to you young men tonight, congratulations. Thank you for being here, and if you have to prove that you were here tonight, go to American Fork City's webpage, bring up the city council minutes of November 28th, and you will find your name and your troop number in the minutes of the meeting. Again, thank you for being here. We set time aside each one of our meetings to hear from the public. If anyone here would like to address the mayor, the city council, or the senior staff, you may come forward to microphone and make your comment at this time. Receiving no public comment, we will move on to the city administrator's report. Mr. Bunker.
Thank you, Mayor. I have just a couple of items to report. The, um, I'd like to thank the Parks Department for working hard on getting the Quell Cove Pavilion going, and that will be completed very soon to where we could have a ribbon cutting, and they've been doing a great job amongst other projects that they've been working on. They've been very busy, so I'd like to thank them for their hard work there. Our finance director has reported that he's finalizing a CAFER, which is a comprehensive annual financial report. It gives a lot of detail and statistical data about the city's finances. It's a very involved report, and Kyle has been doing a great job, has saved our city quite a bit of money by not contracting out that, that work. He's been doing that himself, and he's very talented. I'd like to thank him for that, that work, and those, those details will be presented to the city council in an upcoming audit report that will come to you next month. Finally, I'd like to report with Councilmember Barnes' permission, the city will be joining with the Chamber of Commerce, a, an activity, a Santa Parade that will be on Saturday, December 2nd. It will start at 5:30 PM. Santa will come into the city on a fire truck and start there at, close to Doug Smith Auto, come down Main Street to the library. He'll be there at the library from 5:30 to 7:30, and there will be some pitchers, hot cocoa, candy canes, things like that, so if your kids have a special request from Santa, they can tell him right then. That's all I have.
Thanks for that report, Mr. Bunker. We'll now hear from council reports concerning committee assignments. We'd ask Mr. Barnes to start us, please.
Mr. Bunker, you do not need my permission. Just make sure that's noted in the notes. We discussed it beforehand. He's better informed of it than I am, so we agreed he would do it. I really have nothing else to report.
Thank you. Councilman Frost.
Mayor, I've been eating turkey and watching football for the last two weeks and working, so you know, but nothing to report.
Thank you. Councilman Shelton.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, just a quick update. I heard today that the, uh, there's a proposal for a hike from Republic Services on the tipping fees what we're taking at right now. That contract comes due in June. Ironically, we just adopted our budget, but that'd have $150,000 impact upon that budget, so we're going to be reviewing that, and I'm happy to share any of those numbers and get some input. Um, it's supposed to be a CPI type of an increase, but the timing of it's kind of suspect with the last six months, and I'm knowing that we're going to be utilizing Bayview a little bit more, so if you have more questions on that, happy to answer those at a different time. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Shorter, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Met with the library board, and there are a couple of positions that will be open this year, and we'll be submitting those names to the mayor for approval. Uh, and then, again, the library's doing great. They have some great artist things once a month up in the library, so it's always good if you're there to take a look at some of the artwork. It's really creative, and that's all I have to report, Mayor.
Thanks for that report. The mayor has nothing to report this evening. We'll move on to the common consent agenda. Our common consent agenda this evening includes the minutes of November 14th, 2017, City Council minutes. Is there a motion to approve the common consent as presented?
So moved, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Frost. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Shelton. Any questions on this one? Hearing none, I will take a voice roll call vote. Councilman Barnes.
Aye.
Councilman Barnes is absent, or beg your pardon, Councilman Bowen is absent. Councilman Frost.
Aye.
Councilman Shelton.
Aye.
Councilman Shorter.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. We'll move on to the action items. Our first item, ratification of city bills for payment, November 7th through November 21st of 2017, and approval of purchase requests over $25,000.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, city payments for approval as presented.
Thank you, Councilman Shelton. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Shorter. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, I will call for a voice vote on the city bills for payment and purchase requests over $25,000. Councilman Barnes.
Aye.
Councilman Bowen is absent. Councilman Frost.
Aye.
Councilman Shelton.
Aye.
Councilman Shorter.
Aye.
It's unanimous, and we will pay the bills. Thank you. Item number two, review in action on a resolution indicating the city's intent to annex the Frotten Annexation consisting of .821 acres at 870 East and 30 North.
Mayor, I'd move to approve the resolution indicating the city's intent to annex the Frotten Addition consisting of .821 acres at 870 East, 30 North.
Thank you for that motion, Councilman Shorter. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Frost. Any questions on this motion? Hearing none, I will conduct a voice vote. Councilman Barnes.
Aye.
Councilman Bowen is absent. Councilman Frost.
Aye.
Councilman Shelton.
Aye.
Councilman Shorter.
Aye.
Thank you. It's unanimous again. Item three, review in action on a resolution indicating the city's intent to annex the Thompson Addition consisting of 1.048 acres at approximately 300 North and North Utah County Boulevard.
Mayor, I would move to approve the resolution indicating the city's intent to annex the Thompson Annexation consisting of 1.048 acres at approximately 300 North and North County Boulevard.
Thank you for that motion, Councilman Frost. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Barnes. Any questions on this motion? Hearing none, I will do a voice vote on the Thompson Addition Notice of Intent to Annex. Councilman Barnes.
Aye.
Councilman Bowen is absent. Councilman Frost.
Aye.
Councilman Shelton.
Aye.
Councilman Shorter.
Aye.
It's unanimous again. Thank you, gentlemen. On to item number four, review in action on a resolution indicating the city's intent to annex the Holland Drake American Fork City Annexation consisting of 16.251 acres at approximately 750 West and 400 South.
Mayor, I'd move to approve a resolution indicating the city's intent to annex the Holland Drake American Fork City Annexation consisting of 16.251 acres at approximately 6, 750 West and 400 South.
Thank you for that motion, Councilman Shorter. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Frost. Any questions on this motion, gentlemen? Hearing none, I will conduct a voice vote. Councilman Barnes.
Aye.
Councilman Bowen is absent. Councilman Frost.
Aye.
Councilman Shelton.
Aye.
Councilman Shorter.
Aye.
Thank you. Item number five, review in action on the Tolman Annexation consisting of 2.029 acres at approximately 118 South, North County Boulevard, including the ordinance of annexation, annexation agreement, and placement of the property in the R4-7500 residential zone and the PO-1 professional office zone. Is there any questions on the Tolman Annexation?
There's no questions, Mayor. I'd move to approve the Tolman Annexation consisting of 2.029 acres at 118 South, North County Boulevard, including the ordinance of annexation, annexation agreement, and placement of the property in the R4-7500 and PO-1 zone.
Thank you for that motion, Councilman Frost. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Barnes. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, I will take a voice vote again. Councilman Barnes.
Aye.
Councilman Bowen is absent. Councilman Frost.
Aye.
Councilman Shelton.
Aye.
Councilman Shorter.
Aye.
Motion is unanimous again. Item number six, review in action on a Dixie Fin Annex, American Fork Platte Annexation consisting of 192.81 acres located approximately 600 South, 800 West, including the ordinance of annexation, amended annexation agreement, and placement of the property in the PR3 zone, SP zone, and the PF zones.
Mayor, I'd move to approve the Dixie Fin American Fork Platte Annexation consisting of 192.81 acres located approximately 600 South, 800 West, including the ordinance of annexation, annexation agreement, and placement of the property in the PR3 zone, the SP zone, and the PF zone.
Thank you for that motion, Councilman Shorter. Is there a second?
A second.
Any questions on the Dixie Fin American Fork Annexation?
Just one here, Mayor, on the Vineyard Connector that we have there. We're going to take some right-of-way on that.
Yes, sir, we do. We are not, we are identifying that property and giving them those development rights on any other, any place else on the property, but that is for the continuation of the Vineyard Connector.
And that is on the alignment that the city's proposing at this point. Is that right?
To my knowledge, that's true. Is that your understanding, Adam?
Sorry, Mayor.
The alignment, is that the city's proposed alignment?
Uh, yes, that's the city's proposed preferred alignment. It's one of the alternatives. Um, at the planning commission, there was a question that if the vineyard ultimately goes somewhere else, what happens with this property? Um, and we discussed that it would likely just be a park enlarged next to the power lines, and so the planning commission and the property owner were okay with that.
And if we take that right-of-way, are we able to, do we sell that into the state when that road comes in?
If that's where it goes, then it, then yes, we would, um, it would be transferred to the state whether that's a sale or however that is done in the future. Um, but yeah, we would hold on to it, and then if the state wants that, then there would be means of transferring that.
Chase, is that something you could let me know the legalities of that on? Not for this meeting here, but just another email update just on how that works, transferring that to the state, if we can sell that to them, or if that's something that we get. I'd appreciate it. Thanks, Mayor.
In every job that the state, city gets on with the federal government, there's always enhancements, and always a percentage of city money goes into those federal projects, and many times if we own the property, that constitutes our portion of those enhancements or our share of those improvements as they go forward.
Mayor, um, just a comment. This is roughly 200 acres, which is a pretty big piece of land, and as, as I read through it, I admit I didn't understand all the detail of every little thing that's going on, not even probably half of them, but it looks to me like there's been a lot of work. This isn't the first time they've gone through this, and we're, we're moving parts with the Vineyard Connector and whatever that big power line is, and, and just a bunch of different things. And to me, it looks like there's been a lot of work done to it. This was not dreamed of yesterday and done today kind of a thing, and, and just appreciate staff and their work on it, and I see Mr. Bunker nodding his head. I'm assuming this is all good, so to speak, in, in all of the different areas that needed to be looked at before it came to us, the water rights and the roads and, and all those things, because it is such a large project. It has so much more than most of what we see, and I just wanted to make sure everybody understood on the public record that this is a lot of work and the work has been done, and, and I appreciate, I personally appreciate the work of all those that have brought it to this point.
Thank you for those comments, Councilman Barnes. I would ask for a voice vote on the Dixie Fin Annexation, American Fork Annexation. Councilman Barnes.
Aye.
Councilman Bowen is absent. Councilman Frost.
Aye.
Councilman Shelton.
Aye.
Councilman Shorter.
Aye.
Thank you. It's unanimous again. Moving on to item number seven, review in action on an agreement for the Robinson East Annexation consisting of 16.39 acres located approximately 1,400 North and 100 East. Robinsons are with us this evening. If you have any questions on, uh, what their intent is, you may ask those questions now. It's pretty straightforward. It's been brought to us. We've looked at it, and, uh, we feel very, very good about it, so.
Well, I'm a sucker for cute babies, too, and they're sitting right here on the front row. So I'll, I move to approve the agreement for the Robinson East Annexation consisting of 16.39 acres located at approximately 1,400 North, 100 East.
Thank you for that motion, Councilman Frost. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Councilman Shelton, for your second. Any questions on this motion?
Since they're here, I think we ought to invite them to at least say something since they came to the meeting. Do you guys want to make any comments at all? I'm, I'm encouraging you to do that. The mayor just kind of suddenly invited.
First of all, I wanted to thank you, Mr. Barnes, for the prayer. It was wonderful. Um, my husband and I had talked back and forth on this piece, and at one time we thought that it would be good for the cemetery, and that didn't come through, and I've always felt like that pretty homes would be there. And, so anyway, that's, that's what we decided, and, um, I think it will be a, a very nice, uh, the view and everything, and I think it will be a nice project for the city to see, so thank you again.
Thank you, Pam. I have a motion and a second on the Robinson East Annexation Agreement, and I'll take a voice vote. Councilman Barnes.
Aye.
Councilman Bowen is absent. Councilman Frost.
Aye.
Councilman Shelton.
Aye.
Councilman Shorter.
Aye.
Thank you. Item number eight, review in action on an agreement for the Stone Creek Annexation consisting of 25.31 acres located approximately 300 West, 1100 South. Are there any questions on the Stone Creek Annexation?
I don't want to have all the fun, but I will. I'll move to approve the agreement for the Stone Creek Annexation consisting of 25.31 acres located approximately 300 West and 1100 South.
Thank you for that motion, Councilman Shorter. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Shelton. Any questions on this motion?
Mayor, no questions, but just to, if, if you scouts or all those that are here observing, I think that as I looked through our agenda and as I kind of dissected the information, American Fork's a great place to live, and if you, if you don't believe that, just look at who's trying to come in. I mean, we're annexing in hundreds of acres in one, 25 here, 17 here, and, uh, growth is alive and well in American Fork, so that was just more of a comment than anything, Mayor.
I will ask for a voice vote on the Stone Creek Annexation Agreement. Councilman Barnes.
Aye.
Councilman Bowen is absent. Councilman Frost.
Aye.
Councilman Shelton.
Aye.
Councilman Shorter.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to item number nine, review in action on subdivisions, commercial projects, condominiums, and planned unit developments, including one, platte approval, two, method of satisfaction of water rights, three, posting of an improvement bond or setting of a timeframe for placement of improvements, and four, authorization to sign the final platte and to accept all of the dedications to the public and to have the platte recorded. We have two such this evening in front of us. Item 9A, review in action on a final platte of Jockey Hollow Subdivision, Platte D, consisting of four lots located in the vicinity of 730 East and 750 North in the R1-9,000 residential zone.
Mayor, I would move to approve the final platte of Jockey Hollow Subdivision, Platte D, consisting of four lots located in the vicinity of 730 East, 750 North, in the R1-9,000 residential zone, and to authorize the mayor and city councils to sign the platte and accept the dedications with instructions to the city recorder to withhold recording of the platte subject to all conditions identified in the public record associated with November 8th, 2017 Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you for that motion, Councilman Frost. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Barnes. Any questions on this motion?
Just a quick question on that. Vinwin, can you pull that map back up for us there? It looks like there's one lot that it's going to have double frontage. Do you see any problem there, or did I just read that map wrong?
There are no double frontage lots in this subdivision. Which one were you?
I guess there are 830 North, and then on 650 East, you have that one lot there. Um, maybe it's not on the subdivision map. It looks as if it will create a double frontage.
Yeah, there are no, are you, oh, oh, the between 650 East and 830 North, the floating cul-de-sac? That's the Thompson home. That's existing.
Correct. It's existing, but I just wanted to make sure that, um...
Yeah, but the road to the north, the right-of-way is there, but there's nothing built, so...
Do we ever see that coming back and being split off at any time?
Potentially. Um, it's unsure right now, but potentially.
Just my history on board of adjustments, double frontage creates problems, so, thanks.
I have a motion and a second. I will take a voice vote on the Jockey Hollow Platte D. Councilman Barnes.
Aye.
Councilman Bowen is absent. Councilman Frost.
Aye.
Councilman Shelton.
Aye.
Councilman Shorter.
Aye.
Thank you. It's unanimous again. Moving on, we have item 9B, review in action on an ordinance and final platte for Stone Creek Platte A, Conservation Subdivision Project consisting of 92 lots located at 100 West and 850 South in the PR3 Planned Residential Zone. Copy that is in front of you. There are some property that is going to be slots, and some's going to be in a conservation Any comments or questions for the planning commission on this subdivision?
Hearing none, I would move to approve the ordinance and final platte for Stone Creek Platte A, Conservation Subdivision Project consisting of 92 lots located at 100 West, 850 South in the PR3 Planned Residential Zone, and to authorize the mayor and city councils to sign the platte and accept the dedications with instructions to the city recorder to withhold recording of the platte subject to... recorder to withhold the recording of the plat subject to all conditions identified in the public record associated with the November 8th, 2017 Planning Commission Meeting.
Thank you for that motion, Councilman Frost. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Shorter. Any questions on this motion? Hearing none, I will do a voice vote on the Stone Creek Plat A Conservation Subdivision. Councilman Barnes.
Aye.
Councilman Bowen is absent. Councilman Fro- uh, Councilman Frost.
Aye.
Councilman Shelton.
Aye.
Councilman Shorter.
Aye.
Thank you. It's unanimous again. Item 10, review in action on a resolution approving the adjustment of the fiscal year ending June 30th of 2018 budget. Copies of this was, uh, sent to you. You can see, as I mentioned earlier, the majority of this money is taken from the general fund, uh, the, our sanitation account, and placing that money in an enterprise fund, inasmuch as we are reimbursed for our garbage collection. It, uh, needs to be properly accounted for, and so that's a major adjustment. There are others where some people have, uh, overspent their budget and had to get some help, and there are others that, uh, needed to make some moves to acquire some, uh, major pieces of equipment. Any questions of our budget officer on the, uh, fiscal year, right, 2018 mid-year budget adjustments?
You know, Kyle, I'm just going to ask, if you wouldn't mind, just give us a, a brief overview for everybody here and to help just solidify this new account, this new enterprise account.
Um, so, as the mayor had mentioned, one of the major, um, adjustments I am proposing is to split off our garbage and sanitation fund, not fund, but our revenues and expenditures from the general fund, um, into a separate enterprise fund, so we can actually track the fund balances and, and have it, the accounting be a little more cleaner on it. Um, in addition, we received some grant money, a very small amount during the year. Um, I don't budget those with the main budgets, since we don't know the exact amount. The same, um, the police department has received some overtime reimbursements, um, so we're, um, um, reimbursing the police department's budget for that. Um, in addition, with the, um, CAFR, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, you'll see there's some monies that we have in there that are restricted. Um, the main ones being park tax funds from last year that weren't spent, um, cemetery funds, um, from the $200 per lot that is reserved for cemetery expansion, um, carrying over those amounts. Um, in addition, um, we did budget for the chiller replacement for the library in this budget, but it did come in a little above budget, so we did need to pull some fund balance to, um, to pay for that. And then there's a few miscellaneous adjustments in the impact fee funds to account for the impact fee study we did at the beginning of the year.
Just to sum it up real quick, by taking and putting the garbage collection, for lack of a better term, into a enterprise account, we're really restricting those funds and making it more transparent, so we're tracking what's coming in on the city bill that people are paying versus what we're paying out for those services, and by putting it in enterprise fund, we're restricting the use of that down the road, where right now, being a general fund money, we could use that money for anything.
You're absolutely correct, yes.
Any other questions on the, uh, mid-year budget amendments?
I don't have any questions, Mayor, so I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the resolution, uh, mending the budget, uh, for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2018, as presented.
Thank you for that motion, Councilman Shelton. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Frost. Any questions on this motion? Hearing none, I will call for a voice vote on the fiscal year, June 30th, 2018 adjustments. Councilman Barnes.
Aye.
Councilman Bowen is absent. Councilman Frost.
Aye.
Councilman Shelton.
Aye.
Councilman Shorter.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item number 11 deals with review in action on a resolution declaring certain items to be surplus and disposed of. As I held in the public hearing, we have a, a '96 Ford Ranger and, uh, three appliances from the fire department that we would like to expose, eh, eh, declare excess and dispose of.
Mayor, I'd move to approve the resolution declaring certain items to be surplus and to be disposed of.
Thank you for that motion, Councilman Shorter. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Frost. Any questions on this motion? Hearing none, I will take a voice vote. Councilman Barnes.
Aye.
Councilman Bowen is absent. Councilman Frost.
Aye.
Councilman Shelton.
Aye.
Councilman Shorter.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item 12 is consideration in action and entering to a closed session to discuss the carry- best incumbents of individuals, discuss pending of reasonable imminent litigation, or discuss the purchase lease of real property, and to discuss other items described in Utah State Code 52-4-204 and 205. We are discussing tonight a potential litigation. I would ask that we, uh, have a motion to move to executive session.
So moved, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Frost. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Councilman Shelton. I will ask for a voice vote. On paper, say aye.
Aye.
We will relocate downstairs. I would ask, uh, Casey, if you would join us, please, uh, we would, uh, discuss that potential litigation, and we will close our council meeting from there. Remind the council members, there are some plats for you to sign before you go downstairs. With that, we will end our council meeting for tonight. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your attendance this evening.